Anybody else want anything under discussion? Doctor, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Girba, second, Morrow. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We have no absences tonight and we have a letter of recognition for Chrissy. Is Chrissy here? Okay.
Thank you.
We have a letter of recognition for Chrissy. Where is Chrissy Hohl, daughter of proud parents William and Lisa Hohl, is a graduate of Celine High School and was a part of the Celine High School marching band as the majorette captain. And where is Chrissy has also been an award-winning baton twirler for the past thirteen years and is part of the thirteen-time national champion Celine twirl-ettes under the leadership and direction of Susan Usher. And where is Chrissy recently traveled to Mobile, Alabama, attending the fifty-fifth Distinguished Young American National Scholarship Program and performed a high-energy dance twirl routine and was announced as one of the top four for both fitness and talent. And where is Chrissy captured the title of second runner-up in the Distinguished Young Woman of America contest and was awarded a total of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars in college scholarships and has plans to attend Yale University in the fall to study international journalism and will be the first featured twirler at Yale. Now therefore, I Gretchen Driscoll, Mayor of the City of Celine, on behalf of the Celine City Council and the citizens of Celine, to hereby congratulate Chrissy Hohl for her many accomplishments and awards during her thirteen years with the Celine twirl-ette and for achieving this high honor of second runner-up in the Distinguished Young Woman of America contest and thank her for the recognition she has brought the Celine community as well as being an exceptional representative of the state of Michigan with sincere best wishes for your future at Yale. So congratulations.
Most of you probably have never heard of the Distinguished Young Woman program. I certainly had it until about two years ago and so I'd love to just tell you a little bit about it. It's solely for senior high school girls and it's a scholarship program. Its main purpose is to provide women with an opportunity to attend college for as little cost as possible. So you get to compete in five different events. Scholastic, so you send in all of your high school records. Talent, obviously, I twirled since I've been doing that since I was five. Fitness, so you actually do this about ten-minute-long aerobic workout onstage. It's really grueling, push-ups, setups, the whole deal. Self-expression, where you are to answer a question onstage in front of an audience. And lastly, a ten-minute-long interview in front of a panel of six judges. So they score each of the girls in all five of those events and they come up with the best overall, basically. And so they give out lots and lots of money. Like they said, in the end, between what I won in the state level and the national level, I have over eighteen thousand dollars for my college education. So it's a wonderful, wonderful program and I really, truly enjoyed getting to be a part of it. Thank you all very much.
And we have a Celine Main Street update from Kelly Itzikowski. Getting better at that. Thank you for your patience with me.
Pull the microphone towards you, please.
Of course. Yeah, we've been a fully-functioning select-level Main Street for two months now, so we've got some things rolling. We've received training for each of our four teams as well as our board and we've successfully run the summer music series, beautified the downtown through B. Blumen and recruited volunteers for our organization. Let me go through each of our teams. Promotions team, on June fourteenth, we began the summer music series with the Celine Fidleries to a crowd of approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-five people. Over the next seven weeks, we continue to draw crowds of about two-hundred-plus with the exception of the rain location, which we still drew almost at a hundred people. We've utilized Facebook, BeCeline, and the Celine Patch to spread word about these events and it was exceptionally useful for the rain change. Local businesses have been benefiting from the loud crowds on Thursdays, specifically My Favorite Cafe, Mickey's Downtown, Brecken Grill, and Max's. The owner and operator of My Favorite Cafe said the concerts on Thursday night bring in a lot of business for us and have been very beneficial. We've invested a number of our promotions budget for summer music series on materials that can be reused in future years, such as the banners that are now on Michigan and South Ann Arbor and North Ann Arbor, yard signs that you'll see throughout the community, street banners and whatnot, as well as radio advertisements to spread the word. Like I said, we've continued to get a very large response and a good response from members of the community and we hope to grow it in coming years. For our design team, we have successfully ran B. Blumen campaign, which was managed by the design team. We received sixty-three sponsorships for this year's flower baskets, raising four-thousand hundred and twenty-five dollars. Downtown Beautification Project received excellent feedback from visitors and business owners as well. And a thank-you sign will be posted on Pineapple House to once again recognize the donors for those baskets. The design team has also been moving forward with the alley improvement project. We'll be considering alternate designs in the coming weeks and are currently seeking grants to assist with the cost of the public improvement. At this time, Brecken Grill and Montgiamos have verbally agreed to lease the alley for a small cost with the city being allowed to host events. Our organization team training was completed on July twenty-sixth. We have a great response for volunteers, still hoping to grow. And we also have a volunteer program in the works. It's beginning. It's working on developing a sponsorship program for our volunteers so we can recognize them, show our appreciation, and hopefully grow our volunteer base soon. And finally, our business and economic success team. We've been working with the city to review a number of the previous studies that have been done for the city of Celine, compile them, get those results, so we can have a comprehensive study and strategy for where we want to go and how we can help the businesses. We've also received our training that was on June nineteenth and we will be moving forward with a number of different projects that I will keep you updated on. Personally, I have been attending a number of different community events and organization trainings and meetings to raise awareness about Celine Main Street and just to get familiar with the different community organizations and members. Those organizations involve, include, pardon me, Arts and Cultures, Coalition for a Quality Community, the Two Twelve Art Center, Cake Eaters Club, if I'm correct, as well as the Rotary Club of Celine. We have increased our communication with the addition of a monthly news letter, a more comprehensive media list for different outlets, volunteer sign-up, and higher use of social media, especially Facebook, which we're still hoping to grow, but it has been very useful. And finally, the Main Street office has been fully stocked with office supplies that have been donated solely by community members. So we're up and running, things are going well, and I will be back to update you next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? No, no questions, thank you. I want to make sure. Okay, next on the agenda, we have citizen comments on agenda items under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak to anything on the agenda? That will move on to consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Move to our second Peters. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Under public hearings, we have item twelve sixty-three. This is an application of ECI Incorporated, DBA at Cancun Mexican Grill at four oh five East Michigan Avenue for the available quota liquor license held by the City of Celine. So it would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July twenty-seventh, twenty-twelve memo from C. Clerk Hill, along with the application of Cancun Mexican Grill for the available quota Class C liquor license. Do we have a motion to acknowledge receipt?
So moved.
Second.
Move Morrow, second Girba. Is there any questions or comments for Ms. Hill at this time? Mr. Girba.
Just a question. Were there any other applications besides this?
Yes, we did. The Boulevard Market from Tecumseh, they initially filed an application and they subsequently withdrew because they were not able to get financing to come to town.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Clerk Hill? So we have a motion to acknowledge receipt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And we have the applicant in the audience.
Good evening, members of the council. Michael Brown, attorney for Cancun Mexican Grill. I have with me Mr. Ismail Leon, who is the primary owner of the Cancun Mexican Grill series of restaurants. Mr. Leon and his partners have opened several restaurants in Michigan. They are currently operating two restaurants, two Cancun Mexican Grill restaurants in Oakhamus, Michigan, another one in Grand Ledge, Michigan, and previously owned one in St. John's, Michigan. And then just about three or four weeks ago, opened their latest restaurant in Delta Township, just west of Lansing. So they have just recently gone before Liquor Control Commission and been approved for a restaurant similar to the one that he's proposing to open here in Celine. I want to first acknowledge all the efforts of Ms. Hill, your clerk, in helping me with the preparation for this application, getting this done timely, and keeping me informed at all the way through the process so that we knew where we stood and what was going on, what kind of information the council would like to see from us for purposes of our application. But I certainly wanted to publicly acknowledge her efforts here tonight. Hopefully, you have all the information you need in the printed material we have provided in our application. If not, I'm certainly here to take any questions, as is Mr. Leon. He is one of the four owners of the company. That same four-ownership group is responsible for all of the other restaurants as well. Mr. Leon is, however, sort of the founder, if you will, and the largest stockholder in the company. The restaurants are authentic Mexican food. They are primarily restaurants, doing about ninety percent of their revenue in food sales, so only about ten percent comes from alcohol sales. However, the alcohol portion of the business is critical to meeting the needs of their customers and that is why we have sought to get this liquor license here tonight. People who come in for the type of Mexican food dinner that will be served by the Cancun Mexican Grill, a good portion of those people like to have an alcoholic beverage with that dinner. It's a sort of a complimentary aspect to the meal and we'd like to be able to make sure we can offer that so that they are, so we're meeting those customers' desires. The hours of operation were in your packet, but would be more in line with what you think of as a restaurant. Again, generally closing at ten or eleven o'clock at night. We don't intend to operate as a bar and stay open till two o'clock. And again, as you can see, everything about the operation is more consistent with a restaurant than a bar. So rather than take any more of your time, I'll simply just ask if you have any questions for either myself or Mr. Leon.
Mr. Roth.
I want to thank you for being here this evening. I do have a question, is just how do you train your employees for alcohol issues? I just wondered what the procedure is and for the new hires and that type of stuff.
Sure, good question. Liquor Control will require that we have supervisory personnel who have gone through a certified server training course. We have to do that within a hundred and eighty days of getting our liquor license. At all the other restaurants, I will say that the management staff goes through a training course called the Techniques of Alcohol Management, or TAM, put on by the Michigan Licensed Beverage Association. It's generally recognized as sort of the premier server training course offered in the state of Michigan. And so we will make sure that there are somebody at all times on staff who has obtained that certification. All employees do have to go through a alcohol training program in the restaurants, making sure that they are checking identification and avoiding sales to minors is a big part of the theme of the restaurant. You will see, you know, once the restaurant is complete, that the Cancun Mexican Grill is very careful about posting signs throughout the restaurant indicating what somebody's birthdate needs to be in order to buy or consume an alcoholic beverage, and the staff is very diligent about enforcing that. With the four or five restaurants they already have in the state of Michigan, they have a very good track record of compliance with the liquor code, very few violations in those several restaurants over the years.
I have another question too. How, for how many years have you been operating restaurants in Michigan?
Been in this for about eight, nine years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Girba, second Roth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this application?
Move to close.
Second.
Girba, second Morrow. Closed public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. So it would be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution of the request from ECI Incorporated or DBA Cancun Mexican Grill at four oh five East Michigan Avenue, Celine, for the available Class C quota license and the City of Celine be considered for approval above all others, and that is the consensus of the Celine City Council that the application of ECI Incorporated be recommended for issuance of the Class C quota license by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, subject to the applicant entering into agreement with the City of Celine as submitted, to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute said agreement with ECI Incorporated after review and approval of the city attorney and that said agreement be forwarded to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and further that the Celine City Council has no objection to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission issuing ECI Incorporated SDM license for their business at four oh five East Michigan Avenue, Celine, Wasna County, Michigan. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and adopt and authorize.
I second.
Move Morrow. Second Roth to approve and adopt and authorize. Discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Morrow.
Just one quick comment. I greatly appreciate your interest in locating a business in the Celine community. I work in Lansing, so I'm aware of your other franchises. You do have an outstanding reputation and people are quite pleased with the service and the product that you offer and I hope you have many prosperous years in the Celine community. Thank you again.
Further discussion? Mr. Girba.
Just a real quick question. How does the SDM license work in terms of being able to sell liquor in such off-the-premises? I just, never was clear on that one. I'm reading it says it's not really something that we are required to council approve, but just, it says in the thing that this license permits the licensee to sell beer and wine for consumption off the licensed premise, it says.
Yeah, it's not something that council has to approve. I mean, whether you approve it or not, Michigan Liquor Control can approve it. It does not require local approval. And it's for the sale of takeout beer and wine, I believe.
Right.
For off-premise consumption. Like if you want to go in and buy a six-pack, you can do that.
So if we don't authorize it, the state will authorize it?
Yes.
Okay.
No control.
Did I answer that right?
You did. And I just wanted to, in case there was any clarification needed, it is limited to beer and wine, so it does not allow for takeout spirits. And it primarily allows us, if, for example, somebody were to order a bottle of wine with their dinner, doesn't want to finish the whole bottle, in order to let them cap that bottle and take it with them, we have to have the SDM license to allow the takeout.
That's what I was thinking.
So that's where it primarily comes into play. Again, it's sort of a complimentary service. It's certainly not going to be the focus of the business to do takeout sales, but in order to make sure that customers can, you know, get what they want, we have to sort of offer that takeout service as well. Doesn't happen very often, but that license only costs us a hundred dollars a year, so I generally tell my clients that you're better off to get it now rather than having to worry about it later and have to go through the whole process again just for one small piece of the puzzle.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. That helps a lot.
Further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Under new business item twelve one eighteen, this is Celine Community Fair waiver of Showmobil rental fees. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August sixth, twenty-twelve letter from Celine Community Fair Association and the August eighth, twenty-twelve memo from Public Works Director Fordice regarding waiver of Showmobil rental fee, to approve or not approve waiving the rental fee of twelve hundred dollars for the Showmobil for use by the Celine Community Fair and only charge the delivery pickup fee of four hundred and eighty dollars.
And move to approve.
I second.
Move Rhodes. Second Roth.
Roth.
To approve. Discussion. Mr. Girba.
Is this waiver seen more as a donation, Mr. Grossman? Because actually, I'm not so concerned with allowing maybe a discounted fee or such if we're going to be continuing to do this approach, but since there's nothing really going on in the city anymore, including the fair parade, I have a concern that we may be allowing city property be used in a term without properly charging for it.
I think that it's a legitimate municipal activity in conjunction with the other municipal activities that we have for the encouragement of economic action in the community. So I wouldn't categorize it as an illegal, improper payment. It's, I think it's proper as a waiver.
Yeah, I was just concerned because when it was in the city, I saw it more as being something that we had a direct connection to it. Now that the fair community or the Celine Fair is more on its own, I know, I understand they're having a hard time with funds and things that are happening, but I'm also seeing us also having our own issue. Luckily, we paid for this trailer, I think, over all the years we've had it, so the cost of rental is minimal, but I would like to see a little bit or something, even if we are just charging for the fee to move it in and out. Because in the past, we received sixteen eighty for it and so now we're being asked to waive, I guess, the whole, except for the moving part. Anyways.
Mr. Rhodes.
I believe that the Celine Community Fair is another one of those events and activities that take place within the Celine community that help make us the community that we are. And I think anything that we can legitimately do to help that, the fair continue to thrive is a worthwhile thing. And I know that we all have a fair number of businesses from within the Celine community that exhibit out at the fairgrounds, rent space, and market their products. So in that respect, we are continuing to help the economic development of our community and also it does bring people to the area that might not otherwise be here. So those are the primary points. And then with respect to the amount to be waived, they have not requested a waiver for the delivery and pickup fee, and so we are recovering the actual expenses to take that unit out and bring it back. That's why I am supportive of that.
Further discussion?
I would just say, we've had this conversation a lot of times in the past, and not necessarily this one, but the waiving of fees. And I do, you know, first of all, there is no fair parade this year, which I know we'll all miss. It is part of our heritage here and I think that will save the community some money and I don't think it was being used for anything else, so the labor for moving it, I think, is a reasonable request to waive the difference in light of the challenges right now that are going on financially. So I don't know it's necessarily lost money that we would garner in another way, so I would also be in support of this motion as it's currently written.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Roth.
In waiving the fee, we don't waive the liability for any damages that may occur, correct? So long as we, they still have responsibility for any repair or damages being done.
Thanks, Senator. They've submitted their certificate of insurance.
Right. Thank you.
I guess one other thing, just I would point out, it's a waiver for this year only and it's not, I think it would be reviewed annually every year, so we certainly understand your constraints were under the same ones and I appreciate Councilmember Girba's comment. But in light of the fact that it's probably not going to be generating revenue anyhow somewhere else and we're all in the same challenging times, I think it's an important part of our fabric of our community.
Is there further discussions on the motion? So we have a motion to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Motion carries. Item twelve one nineteen, Septage Holding Tank Cleanout. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July thirty-first, twenty-twelve memo from Bob Skoll, Superintendent, order production and pollution control to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute the materials management agreement with Senegro Central LLC after review and approval by the city attorney, an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand for mobilization, de-watering by use of a filter press, and disposal of the septage material, including landfill costs for the cleaning of the city's Septage Holding Tank.
Move to authorize.
Second.
Move Rhodes, second Peters. There you are. Mr. Skoll.
This is basically a housekeeping item. As you know, the city operates a septage receiving station. It's a wastewater treatment plant. It was last cleaned out in two thousand and five and the scope of work is way beyond anything we can do in-house.
Question? No questions? That's pretty easy. We have a motion on the floor to authorize. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Resignation of Parks Commission Member and Commission Vacancies. We have received a letter. We have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the letter of July twenty-third, twenty-twelve from Mike Popovich, resigning from the Parks Commission effective immediately and to thank Mr. Popovich for his dedicated service to the commission. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move Rhodes, second Girba. The reason I put this on the regular agenda and non-consent is we now have two openings on Parks Commission, although I think I might recruit somebody at Summer Fest, so possibly we're down to one. We can talk about that. But we do have several openings and my understanding from our clerk is that we don't really have very many applications for any commissions right now, so if there was other vacancies, we would have some standing vacancies. So any citizens that are interested in giving back to the community by serving on a commission, we look forward to your application. There is online application, also description of all the committees that we have describing what, how often they meet and what their roles and responsibilities are. So I hope people consider applying because it's great to have an opportunity to give back to the community you live in.
Mayor, is it possible to have someone on city staff send out an email or communique informing us as to which vacancies or which commissions and boards have vacancies so that when we're approaching people and attempting to recruit them, we can offer them specific slots?
That would be great. So we have a motion on the floor? Mr. Peters.
Just real quick, being a member of the Parks Commission, I want to say a special thank to Mike for serving as long as he did on the commission. Mike was a real spark plug and he always championed the Green Thumb Award portion of the program. So Mike's going to be tough to replace. He was a hard-working guy. But like the mayor said, we're always looking for volunteers. I know at the Celtic Festival, we're looking currently for a new website person. So if anybody would like to volunteer for many opportunities, contact the office or online, get old Diane or Connie and they can get you started. There's lots of different opportunities. People come and go for a variety of different reasons and it's really a worthwhile effort, so, thank you.
Mr. Hart. I'll take this opportunity to note that the Arts and Culture Committee also has a vacancy at this time and we'd love to have a new member.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor to acknowledge receipt? Mr. Girba.
Historic district. I'd like to let everyone know that recently, when we had a house that decided to have their windows replaced, and they did it without pulling a permit and then actually going ahead and violating the HDC review and everything, the committee has agreed to continue to pursue rectifying the situation. At this point, we've almost had another situation, similar type of thing, but luckily, it was caught before the, well, I should say, the windows were starting to be removed, and the individual realized where it was in, and it basically got information to prevent it from going any further, and then it came back to the HDC and we reviewed it. Concern has been that some, the way that some of the building permits have been handled, from my perspective, may need to be a little bit different. I guess my understanding was this one was facts, and they were under the impression that the permit had been approved, and then all of a sudden, somebody reviewed it and caught it, and it stopped it. I know there are concerns about how we handle improvements and such in historic areas, but having an individual, and this was an outside company, pull out windows, replace them without a permit, and then come back to us and saying, "Well, you know, we don't want to cooperate with you. Basically, you need to live with what we put in there." Is not the way that we really should approach this, and I'm concerned that it basically will violate our HDC status and also potentially our other statuses that we have for the city for historical aspects. So we're looking at this from an overall approach, and I think council just needed to be brought up to speed on this one.
Just a comment. Being part of the commission, when we actually implemented that, you know, the actual first historic district, I think informing the residents would be really helpful in a proactive way.
And that's what we're going to be doing?
So maybe like doing an annual newsletter, maybe some, there's a lot of, you know, one of the reasons historic districts are, have value is they actually improve the economic integrity of that neighborhood.
Right.
And I think, you know, there's studies, and there's all sorts of positive aspects. While I know some people feel like that's limiting to what, you know, they can do, et cetera, there are actually, you know, documented records that show that it does improve the neighborhood and the value. And just wondering if there's a more proactive way, maybe doing a potluck once a year or some kind of way to get the neighbors more involved.
Yeah, and part of our thing is, we are going to be doing that, and we're also providing more information and guidelines of what some of the other cities have done around, which won't be as restrictive as Ann Arbor and such, but basically ideas of what is acceptable and what isn't, and some of the ideas of where to really look towards what needs to be done. But it was interesting that we have individuals that were part of the recent identification of South Ann Arbor Street who have lived there for years and realized they weren't in a historic district. And so I think there is some education that needs to happen, even though I know they voted towards it and such. So we realize that, and we are working towards that.
And there used to be like plaques that were given out, recognizing, you know, homes that were really incredible, you know, greatly.
Yeah, and I think.
There used to be some really positive things that.
And that's where we are. We're finally have a committee.
Like the Green Thumb, you know, do a historic Green.
Yeah, I agree. We have a committee now where we have individuals that are showing up to the meetings where we haven't had that in the past. So we have a lot more that are more dedicated to making sure the city has a great reputation for that. But the concern with this one was, we had been working with the homeowner and basically trying to get them to, you know, work with the historic commission, but they went ahead, as did the outside building company, and tore the windows out anyways without a permit. So that, from my perspective, is a city operational issue, not necessarily an HD issue, so we approached that.
Okay. Mr. Hart, you had?
Yes, thank you. The Arts and Culture Committee was happy to see the sculpture walk all in pieces, all in place, and have a dedication ceremony at Summerfest. The audience was not very large because of rain, but, and we have, we also have brochures with a map and a listing of all of the sculptures in the walk, the five loan to the city by Mr. Detroit for a year, plus the existing sculptures in the city. And we'll be working on distributing those. You can look for them around town. I'm sure there will be some at City Hall. I know there will be some at the library, and we hope to have some also downtown at some of the merchants. So take a sculpture walk and look for the brochures.
Any other committee or commission reports? Mr. Marl.
Thank you. Well, let me first expand on what my colleague, Mr. Hart, said. I actually attended the first official sculpture walk on Saturday morning at Summerfest, and that was lightly attended as well. However, it was a delightful tour, and the brochure is available here at City Hall. So I echo her comments. You should definitely walk around town and experience and take a look at every one of our sculptures that are on loan, because it really is a nice addition to our community. My commission report is that last week, Wednesday, we had a very eventful planning commission meeting. Many of you may have read that Reinders, the senior care facility, received final site plan approval for their development at the corner of Woodland and Maple. We also scheduled a public hearing for the home-based business ordinance, and we discussed again the downtown overlay, and we were going to have, I believe Carlisle Wartman, our planning liaison, gather a little bit more information regarding the parking issue, and that will come back at the September planning commission for further discussion. But I wanted to bring you, bring that information to you, make you aware of that. I don't know if the mayor has anything she would like to add as a member of the planning commission, but again, very eventful, and yeah, that's it.
Any other commissioner or committee reports? Reports are in other announcements. Sorry to did some of that. Mr. Marl.
I've got one here. If you could take one of those and pass it down, Mr. Rhodes, I'd appreciate it. On behalf of the Celine Area Schools Historic Preservation Foundation, which is the outfit that maintains and oversees the Weber Bliss One Room Schoolhouse on Woodland Drive, I would like to invite my council colleagues and those in the audience and those who will be watching this meeting at home to, I believe, our fourth or fifth annual ice cream social, which will be held on the 26th of this month from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Weber Bliss Schoolhouse on Woodland Drive. I think I'll have a flyer for everyone on council. I believe there'll be a few extras, so maybe we can put it at the front desk of City Hall. If you have questions, the contact information is printed on the bottom of this. But the reason I bring this up tonight, for those of you who are new to council, we have two competitions in which I would solicit your participation. The first of which is a watermelon seed spitting contest between Celine City Staff, City Council, and Celine Area School Principals. And then the second is the croquet tournament between Celine Board of Education members and Celine City Council members. And as you can see by the flyer here, I'm proud to say I was the winner of the 2011 watermelon seed spitting contest, and I'm also proud to say that my council colleague, Mr. Rhodes, was the winner of the croquet tournament. So we want to maintain those titles, so I encourage you to attend. And again, if you have any questions, you can utilize the numbers at the bottom of this flyer, or you can contact me directly. Thank you.
Any other reports or announcements? If not, we'll move on to downtown parking stash report. Police chief. Have a nice report in here, our package. Thank you for the time on us.
Good evening. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read my report. We've received some complaints that the parking in the parking lots, that people are parking way too long there. And what I've done is, this actually started before I became employed here, so I included a copy of a memo that was written by interim chief Linman, and I've included that as well. What I found was, being new to the community, I decided to just walk the different parking lots and find out what they looked like from a upfront, close basis. And as I did that, there was not a time that I saw the lots completely full. And as a matter of fact, the long-term lots are rarely used at all. But we do have a couple of people who park consistently in Lot 1 for the entire time that they're either at work or they're using it as a long-term parking lot. And I know one of the concerns is enforcement, but what, okay. But what I'm finding is, we also have a large group of people who would not want enforcement because of the prospect that it may drive away business as well. The police department certainly can enforce if that is the council's pleasure. Apparently, it hasn't happened for the last several years that I am aware of, and I know several business people are happy with that at this point, but I know there's a couple that are unhappy with that. But we could do it. We do not have a parking officer that is assigned, so it would have to be on a sporadic basis, and it would be randomly done. I did talk to our attorney, and he did indicate to us that it, we cannot just enforce in one parking lot, we have to enforce in all of them. And so having violations maybe just in one parking lot, we can't just target that lot, we would have to do them all. So we may be penalizing other lots as well by doing enforcement. I guess I'm open for any questions rather than to, you know, give you a long speech here and just, if there's anything that you would like to ask, or if anything, somebody in the audience would like to ask.
Comments?
Thank you. I just wonder if this is almost more of an employer issue than a police issue. And we got a study done here in 2007 by Quinn Evans. It was an architectural firm. They did an urban study for us, and he simply stated, this is 2007, they recognized there was a problem. Employee parking responsibility of the business owners ensured employees park in further out lots. And it seems to me if they just did that, that that might solve the problem. It seems simple enough.
And I believe that was also true in a 2000 report that we had as well, in that they talk about if employers would have their employees not park in the short-term parking lots, and if the employers themselves would not necessarily park there, that that would free up several spaces as well.
Sure, and I think it benefits the employees if you bring more business in by letting those spaces open for the customers.
Right.
If I may, Madam Mayor, and I agree, it is simple, but unfortunately, when we approach those folks, they continue to park in the short-term parking lots and not the long-term parking lots. So it's not, unfortunately, it's not as easy as we would hope.
Mr. Girba.
My concern isn't so much with enforcement, because I think the individuals, there may be once or twice an individual that's there more than three or four hours, but it is the individuals that are parked there eight hours, I think, that I still see as a concern. And unfortunately, the ones that kind of don't want the enforcement are the ones that are the individuals that are basically parking their car there that would benefit them even more if they would have those cars moved so clients could park there. If we're not going to have any kind of enforcement, then we really don't need to have the three-hour parking enforcement signs up there. It's just kind of a deterrent, but without being somewhat following up on what the threat of it is, is getting a parking ticket, we're kind of having an empty thing, and this is just not going to improve. And I think that one of the things is doing some kind of random enforcement or trying to have some other type of, not necessarily the police do it, deputizing individuals or something of some type of different approach to take on the problem, might be a solution. I just don't know at this point.
Mr. Roth.
I believe that we need to have some type of enforcement, and if we have city ordinances and they're not enforced, we should clear them from the books. So I think some type of enforcement, as if it be random, is fine with me, but completely ignoring the ordinance, it's not right.
Okay.
I, we did, Mr. Kinley was not able to come tonight, and so it's sort of difficult because you're, this is, as you know, being police chief in another community, this is always a perennial issue of parking. I've been elected official in Celine for 20 years, and it comes up all the time, and I've been a big downtown supporter, and it still comes up all the time, no matter what, and there's always differing points of view. I think the biggest issue is that, my concern is, number one, that while there may be opportunity for people to park, there has been an ongoing problem that is not being, does not seem to be addressed, capacity to be addressed. And we are not, I personally would not be interested in hiring a person or incurring additional costs, and I understand that to take away from another person's, you know, another officer's duties. Mr. Klein, you were not at the meeting, and so I'm thinking that this might still need to be a process, that we're sort of still in a process. We actually talked about working with the business owners, I think, almost a year ago, and we talked about the map, and I think, you know, maybe we can do some more on that. My concern, and I expressed it at that meeting, is that as the downtown continues to grow and the retails storefronts continue to fill up, we're going to get that pressure to build another parking lot when we're really not utilizing the parking lots for the employees and the tenants. And Mr. Kinley had mentioned at that meeting that he can't enforce in a public lot, and he's supportive of, you know, his apartment dwellers, or if tenants are not using the lot properly, he's supportive, but he can't personally, I mean, he tells them not to park there, but he can't enforce it in a public lot. So there's that, sort of that complication. But I under, I also appreciate that you're pretty new to this position, and so you're sort of caught in this like, well, how serious is it? And, you know, maybe, I don't know, Todd, if this is something that we can continue to work on. I think it's a problem, and I agree with, you know, if we're going to have a sign, we, you know, enforcement saying it's enforced, I think that people that are upset that it's not being enforced have a valid complaint. I mean, they're assuming that it's, you know, it should be enforced if they're having problems. One of the things he suggested, that the conversation that you missed, was this wasn't to be like a daily, let's chase our customers out of town. This was to try to, you know, whoever's parking there for eight hours while they go into their, you know, offices or work or whatever, or they're, you know, a place of abode, that they don't park where customers are coming in to grab a cup of coffee or get their hair done or whatever. And he, you know, some of the concern was that three hours maybe wasn't enough, or somebody that wants to go shopping and have lunch, and so he suggested maybe four hours. I mean, the idea was it was supposed to be a friendly, helpful way to be more customer-friendly and bring more consumers, because we are one of the unique opportunities in Washtenaw County where we have free parking, and we should be able to promote it and be proud of it and say, "Come to Celine, because we have all this great free parking." So that's sort of, that's sort of, you know, tough boat we're in, and I appreciate the fact that you're being new, trying to sort of feel things out a little bit is problematic. So I really appreciate the report that you put together.
Thank you.
I know, Mr. Rhodes, did you have some comments? Did you?
Well, I was going to say that I've attended several of the Downtown Merchant Association meetings over the years, and this is an issue which does come up from time to time, but based on the comments of the merchants who also attend those meetings, for the most part, they don't, they don't seem to feel that there's a problem with their customers finding spaces to park. And your comments in your memo about actually looking at those spaces bears that out, so it seems to be more a matter of perception than of reality that those lots are full and that people, there will be some people who abuse it. There always are people who take advantage of whatever rules are out there. I'm not in favor of a random spot checking, random ticketing, because then it becomes a gamble. Person taking a chance, if they're coming to our community to shop or visit, are they going to, are they going to worry about maybe this is the day and this is the lot that gets checked or not? You know what? There's uncertainty there, and I think when there's uncertainty, people become uncomfortable. And I don't want that. I want people to be comfortable when it comes to our downtown. So I don't have an answer to the problem, like most everybody else here. We don't have answers to it either, but my general feeling is that when we continue on the way we have been, there is that one possibility, as Mr. Kinley pointed out, and maybe some others, of making it a little longer time period. But even that, even if you had a six-hour parking time limit, there's still going to be people who are going to park there for eight, 10, 12 hours, and that's just kind of the way it is. So I don't, I don't know how to resolve the issue. I don't, we don't have the money to build more parking. People seem to continue to want to be able to park as close to where their destination is as possible. Maybe it'd be good for the health of our residents if we made them walk a little further.
Well, I have to admit that I was quite surprised when the city manager and I actually walked the first time down there, how close our parking lots are. And those long-term lots are close.
Right.
So I was surprised that people don't park in them. So maybe, maybe educating our employers and educating our residents that live in that area, that it's only another 50 feet to walk to one of those long terms, I'm not sure.
Mr. Roth.
I'm still with the thing, if we have city ordinances, I feel so all ordinance should be enforced and by some means, and this could be a learning process, educating process, if those people who are consistently violating and be caught by a random check in any lot, that they would get some type of a memo or whatever it is, and a means for education, just verbally knowing and knowing there's no teeth behind it. That's not going to stop them. That's not going to change the behavior, because they know they can get away with it. So I believe that if we want to exist the way we are and not enforce, let's just remove the ordinance or do something about educating the people. And that's what traffic lines are, supposed to be a means of education, so we need to activate that process or do away with the ordinance completely.
What do you think about our taking down the three-hour parking limit sign?
Taking them down completely?
If we're not enforcing?
I think that you have a few people who are violating, because I don't, I don't see this as a major group of people there, but I think you have a few that are violating it. And I think before removing the time limit, I think an opportunity to educate may be the better way to do it. And I don't disagree with you that ordinances are on there for a reason. But what I'm concerned about is within those random checks, we're going to hit customers. And I don't think that that's a good thing. You know, I think if I came here to Celine for the first time and I just happened to spend four hours rather than three and got a ticket, I doubt I would come back. So maybe if we can, maybe if we can educate rather than do enforced to begin with. And as a couple of you have said, this, this problem isn't new. It's, it's been around for years and it's not just here in Celine, it's everywhere. Maybe there's just a way to make it better. I'm not sure.
So do you think you could come back with a plan on how to educate? Maybe some more?
Well, I actually, just this morning, went and talked to who is a known violator, somebody who I know parks there for eight hours. And I think I've, I established a little bit of rapport that, you know, let's try to work through this rather than create an enforcement. And he at least acknowledged that it is an issue. So I, yes, I would, I would be happy to, to identify those people because I think we all know probably who they are. Contact them either by letter or in person and see if we can't get them to voluntarily do it. And we always have enforcement, you know, as a, as a resort if we need to. Like I said, my only concern is that we're going to target and hit citizens that are just here to shop and have a good time and get a bad taste in them all.
Okay. Ms. Tahr.
I, I would be opposed to removing the limits, even if there's not stringent enforcement, because I, I think I'd like to have enough faith in my fellow citizens to think that people would abide by guidelines even if they didn't see a parking person wandering around handing out tickets or flyers, first of all. Possibly Mr. Kinley's suggestion of changing, changing the, the limit a bit. I haven't read the full memo yet. And, and the other, the other observation, the other is just an observation. I noticed, well, the observation is no matter what we do, I believe there will always be complaints about parking. Doesn't, that doesn't mean there aren't some changes that we could make to make it better, but, but I don't think we'll ever, enforcement is not going to solve the problem and changing the time limit or taking away is not going to take complaints about parking away because people just complain about parking. And I noticed one of the comments in the memo from interim Chief Lindman, one of the merchants said, when there was enforcement, there was still a parking problem, enforcement didn't help. So, so while I would be happy to see improvements, I also guess, I, I think we just need to realize that it's possible that we may never completely solve this problem.
Mr. Gearbox.
Besides downtown, there are a couple of other areas where parking are becoming more of an issue and a concern, namely on South Harris Street between Henry and Michigan Avenue, basically where Speedway employees are parking and also individuals from M&amp;D. I don't know if we can look at potentially, and this is part of the whole thing, is looking at where, as we get more employees in such downtown and where they're parking and such. We may need to better identify areas by either line marking or whatever, making specific spaces available. Because there's issues, there are service businesses on there and everything that potentially have a similar type of thing going on uptown where we got people parking for eight hours and yet have no ability to have customers park where they're usually park out in front or such. The other issue is I'm thinking if we could look at Henry Street in terms of where we used to have, where we now currently have no parking, we look at traffic calming and such, is there potential to free up some more spaces along that where it's no parking along the north side of Henry Street, along where R&amp;B and all that area is. We usually have that, I think it was kind of set up that way when there used to be a concern about when R&amp;B was there and individuals were parking and all that. So I think as we look at this, we need to look at all the areas because as we do, we could probably provide some more spaces, but I'm looking at mainly helping the businesses wherever they are located. We need to look at the parking situation for all of them in that main core center of downtown.
Any other comments?
Mr. Campbell has something there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. Just for clarification, Mr. Rhodes mentioned about uncertainty and, and I certainly agree that we don't want folks to be uncertain. And I think about a year, a little over a year ago, and this came back up again in a big way, I think there was, in the newspaper and then people started talking, oh, is, you know, I think Celine might start enforcing parking and, and so there was some negative chatter out there. So I, I would ask if there was a consensus, just so I, to your question, Mayor, about whether or not we can come back with another plan and how, I'm just concerned if this continues to linger out there of uncertainty, the potential for some negative impact. If, if, you know, potential customers, people, oh, I don't know if I'm going to go to Celine because I, I thought I heard they're going to start, you know, enforcing parking, I don't want to get a ticket. So my question of council is, is it a consensus that we don't want to enforce? I don't want to make any assumptions here. And we can certainly work on that education component and we can come back and say, this is what we're doing to educate our folks, probably working with the DMA, maybe the Main Street folks, whatever, to, to, to work with folks. But as far as from the, the enforcement piece, whether or not that's something that council wants us to do one way or the other, that's just so we have better direction.
Comments? Mr. Gearbox.
I'm fine with leaving the three-hour signs up. The enforcement issue, I think it's going to be, it's really more a problem in one parking lot. I think it's number one and that's part of, been the issue behind Dan's Tavern in that area. I think the enforcement, if they want to really push on that one, will be the individuals that are actually having their businesses close out there, going to help to have self-police. We can't do all of this. At this point, I think we're fine the way we are, status quo.
Mr. Peter.
Yeah, I agree. I don't want to see enforcement. I think like Chief said, leaves a bad taste in people's mouths and we don't, we don't want to do that. We don't encourage business. It sounds to me like this may be a shotgun approach to really address a couple of people. Maybe that, maybe just target those folks and not take this, this blanket approach to the whole town and see if that works first. So I would be against the enforcement.
Any further discussion?
Also in favor of the status quo at, at the moment, but have no problem continuing a dialogue and discussion about how we can better educate people.
Mr. Roth.
I'm again, far as, I would agree, we have an ordinance, it should be enforced as something educational. So I would like to see that those who are officially violated be officially informed with the strict promise that it will be enforced when they violate. Because they've been identified as known violators. And that's an educational process that, that's what alleviates far as the people coming in town. And since you know the vehicles, can identify them through the license plates, where they're from, that sure is an indicator whether there's some visitor coming into town just to be shopping. So we know where the problems are, those who are officially doing it. They need to be informed that we know about it, we're putting teeth into it, we have it, and that should, I feel should be enforced.
And, and we can, we can do that, but in talking to-
That's, that's my position, far as not to go a status quo because the problem won't go away. And if people know that it had been warned properly and then is there, they've done it to themselves.
Well, I think the majority of council is in favor of what you're more or less recommending in the memo. I think probably what would be a good idea is to maybe come back in, say, two months. And, you know, I know we've talked about this map and working with merchants and, you know, the property owners that have tenants that, you know, have apartments upstairs and, you know, trying to do a better job working with the people that are trying to promote business in downtown, the DMA or the Main Street or, you know, any kind of the Chamber, all the organizations and really try to do a push with the, with this and maybe have, you know, some customer information to, so people understand where there's long-term parking and not. You know, the reason I brought up a year ago is because I have gotten complaints and I have gotten complaints to the point where people, and they don't come to DMA meetings. So you're, you're not going to hear about it unless you just go to business, to business, to business. And to the point where they say it interferes with their business. And as mayor, it's my job to try to help promote all business and support our customers. So that's one reason. And the other reason is my concern and we've gotten that pressure in the past is if we continue to park only in that one area and not utilize long-term, people are going to say we need more parking and the city needs to pay for more parking when we're not utilizing the parking properly and we'll continue to have that. But I do really appreciate what you've done so far and I do agree with you that education is really important. And I do believe that, you know, everybody, you know, we are, we are all in this together, like you said, and I do think it's really important to work together for, and I, maybe it means helping people understand when they do park right there, it interferes with people that would want to come to Celine to shop and consume, you know, spend dollars, they're precious dollars and we need to make it. So I think the consensus to your question is, status quo would be the same, but we would probably like to see a report back in the next, say, end of October, maybe. I mean, we will be coming into the holiday season. I think, you know, things are picking up. There's more, you know, probably more activity than August and July when a lot of people go, you know, are out of town and everything. So I think it is something that needs to be monitored. There's definitely a differing point of view here as there is in the rest of the community and that's what a good democracy is all about, so.
Thank you. And the last, to Mr. Gearbox's point about looking at Hanning Street, is that agreeable? I mean, is that-
Harrison and Henry?
Harrison and Henry. I think, I think my suggestion is that we all, we should look at all our areas, but I know in particular right now, there seems to be a lot of cars parking there all the time now. And so maybe identifying where cars can park and such, because even when there's stop signs and all that and people coming in and out of that drive, it's getting really hazardous.
Right. We, yeah, we dealt with that situation last. It has, it has, even though there are still some challenges, it has greatly improved over the last summer, but yes.
Yeah, along those same lines, I think the, the deline, marking off parking spaces on, on East McKay, right at Ann Arbor Street, led to better use of that space for parking. So I think it would probably work quite well in other locations in the city too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, well, the chief's up here because my issue is really dealing with him, if we could just move the next item on the community garden. I understand there was some damage and such that occurred out at the Celine Community Garden today? Did anybody file a police report or such?
There, yeah, the officer got a call out there. It had something to do with, with vegetables or fruit or something.
Well, it sounded like it was all, well, according to what I read on someone's Facebook, that a lot of things were tore up and some symbols and such were lifted on some of the items and things there. I just want to make sure and concerned that if it's anything that's more than just a vandalism, I want to make sure that we're addressing it and dealing with it.
No, we're addressing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sauk Trail Commons Shopping Center Status Report. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As, as I'm sure most, if not all of you've seen, unfortunately, the, the leaning sign at the northwest corner of the industrial and Michigan Ave intersection for Sauk Trail Commons, there's also other concerns in there as far as the, the parking area, whether it's large potholes or just things not being kept up. We have been for a number of months trying to work with the owners, to no avail. We did, we were hoping a couple of weeks ago to be able to meet on site with them, but they did not. And so we are now working through the city attorney's office, which they've sent a letter. I believe they have until the August 24th to respond, to make those corrections. Otherwise, we'll proceed with whatever remedies we need to, to, to try and do that. So we want to, whether, hopefully, they will repair or remove that sign before we have to, but, so that's, that's the process where we're at.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell? Thank you for that report. Okay, is there any other discussion items? Well, under public comment under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. You're looking very refreshed, Mr. Trapp.
Oh, thank you.
Recovered from the Summerfest?
You bet.
You're amazing.
Our Trapp, I'm on the board of the Picnic in the Park Group. That is the core group behind Summerfest. And really before I get into kind of giving you a little recap of Summerfest, I don't have all the numbers yet, but I'm working on them. I would like to take this time to thank the DPW. We could not do this without their help, both setting up and teardown. Guys are exceptional. I also want to thank the Celine crew. There's about 14 kids that came out both nights to help clean up, set up, whatever. It sure takes a big load off of the members of the Picnic in the Park Group that do set up Summerfest. The kids do a great job and we make a nice donation to the Celine crew for their future boathouse. So it works good for everybody. One of the things that we did this year is we had a little bit more police presence. Officer Flynn, Officer Ringe, and then Tiffany Small from Pittsfield Township, who is the high school officer, made theirselves known and available throughout. The merchants, even though there was a number of kids that were roaming around, most of the merchants felt very, very comfortable because there was such a huge police presence. In addition, we also had some cadets, but there was just a lot of blue uniforms and I want to thank the chief and everybody else for helping us do that. Our attendance on Friday was a little shaky. We did have halfway decent night. All the artist booths were filled. The rain didn't help a lot. Casino night from the Rotary made about 1,500 bucks, which is comparable to what they did last year. On Saturday, the, the rain early in the morning didn't help the street machines. We had 120 last year. This year, we had 52 cars. We still gave away as, as many prizes and things as we did in previous year, but just it's hard for people to bring out their, their toys, their whatever, if it's raining. So those that did, we're very happy that they did. Our 5K race, we had 250 registrants and 225 people did run. The corporate challenge, which was won by Flatout Bread, was just 12 seconds over Nature's Garden. We're going to have a plaque for Flatout. We didn't know who the winner was going to be, so we haven't made the plaque yet, but we will and we'll make a big deal of presenting the plaque to them. The Historical Society, the trolley, there was more than 300 riders. I don't think it went out every time totally full, but it was darn close. I actually took a few minutes and, and rode that. And if you haven't done it at least once, it's worth it. I was very happy to hear all of the commentary from the costume individual that was monitoring the, the whole process there. Not everything that we did was a screaming success. Yoker tournament left a lot to be desired. Maybe next year. One of the bands was the Island Guys and there were more positive comments on that band than any of the other bands, even though we have some very good bands, but looks like we may be having the Island Guys back again. The Rubber Duck Race, first place was the Diane Freeze, $300. Second place, Mariah Evans, $200. And third place went to Gwen Blau for $100. Our firemen sold 500 chicken dinners. 105 of those were takeouts, which was a real benefit. A lot of people that would like to have a chicken dinner in the past haven't been able to. They could call up the number and they met them on Michigan Ave and gave them a chicken dinner and took their money. So I think that worked out great for everybody. And the last thing is our team block party. Tremendous. Went from eight to 11. I went over there about 8:30 and there was 200-plus kids. They had a band, they had a DJ, they had giveaways, the whole bit. And I think it worked out really great. Overall, Saturday, inside parking lot number four was as crowded as it's ever been. There were times where you couldn't even walk through there, you had to kind of squeeze through in between. So between Friday and Saturday night, I think it's comparable to what we did in 2011. And so there are a few other events that I'm still trying to get numbers on, but I think for the most part, Summerfest- think for the most part, Summer Fest was a huge success, and very happy and very thankful that we had all the cooperation and, from the volunteers that we did, so. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you for your dedication to it, and also to all the volunteers from Picnic in the--
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Glenn Law, 521 Canterbury Drive. Just quickly on the parking issue. I know you've been dealing with it for a number of years on council, when I was on council, it was also raised up. And I'm glad to see that the education part is going to at least be re-looked at or refocused on. I think that's important, that not only those who are abusing the privilege to park in the parking lots are told about what's going on, but everyone, business owners, residents, shoppers, because you don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater in this situation, because there's a balancing act, as I'm sure you all agree, maintaining a, the parking and making sure that it's fair for everyone, and that businesses are prospering from it, and that residents that live in the area also have a place to park and it's fair for them. So I encourage that, that some sort of resolution, or at least dialogue, take place between all parties, because I think this is an opportunity for the community to see council and the city leaders, as well as the police and, and the business owners and everyone, sort of work together to get something done and get this resolved. So keep it up. Thank you.
Good evening, John Olson. I am president of the Downtown Merchants Association. I wanted to thank the city and the DPW, and in particular the Police Department for making this another successful Summer Fest. Our group in particular runs the, the art part of it, and we did have a couple of issues last year, and it was very nice that they made it a very smooth evening, and we had, we had one person say that he didn't have that good a show. I'd say the bulk of them said that they did better than normal. We had two people who said it was their best one this year, and one say it was their best one ever. So--
That's great.
From their standpoint, they, the people who came out were people who were shopping, which is a good thing. As far as the parking thing, I agree, I'd like to see us keep the signs, I think most people will tend to abide by that, and it's really not our customers that are causing the problems, it's other people. So, you know, we work as, as a group, you know, I've been the president now for, I don't know, eight, nine years, something like that, and we've lived through some pretty tough times economically, and we've created festivals and worked with the city and worked with other groups to, to bring people into town, and I think the last thing we want to do is have someone come into town and get a ticket and get ticked off and go back and tell all their friends that, you know, Saline's a terrible place, and, you know, we never want to lose those customers. So I'd rather see us go after the people who are, who are being the rule breakers instead of going after our customers that we try so hard to get here. Thank you.
What happened?
Pardon?
Your foot.
Ah. Hi, my name's Larry Osterling. And FYI, I broke my leg four years, four weeks ago.
Oh!
But I'm feeling much better, thank you for asking. Appreciate that. I think I know most of you, and I've had a really nice run at the Chamber for the last 12 years. But I did want to also tell you something this evening that I think is really important. And today, I believe to be a historic day, a great day in the history of Saline, and probably like some of those things. In fact, I rank it right up there with three times we were named top 100 cities in the country, and some of our state championship teams. But sometimes things don't get known and don't get published, it just sort of happen. But it's been, I don't know, over 60 years since we've had our own local paper, or a new local paper. And I can't tell you the number of times I've heard, and I think probably I'm speaking for a fair amount of people, that they want to see more coverage of the local Saline community. I think against our local paper, but our local paper is expanding its focus, and sometimes they miss a lot of Saline stories that are really important. And in the last couple of years, we've really had a white knight come in and fill that void, and that void is Tran Longmore, who was here this evening, quite shy actually, but I'm hoping he'll get up and talk about it, because this is really something really super for our community. And I think we, basically what Tran is doing is he's starting a new local online newspaper, Saline Only, Saline Stories, it's going to be called the Saline Post. I felt it was important to get them a word out and get people to know, because he's done a really good job, he's been at just about every meeting I've ever been at. I think, I don't think the guy has a home life, to tell you the truth, but does a really super job. It's risky in the media market these days. It's, it's expensive venture, a lot of time, and as anybody who's in the field now will tell you, things have changed. Things have changed at the Ann Arbor News, things have changed at newspapers all over the country. But for us, as a small-town community, and our sister townships as well, to have someone dedicated to this kind of reporting, this kind of media exposure, I think is something that we all ought to celebrate. And so I, I know it's risky, I think he's gonna, I, I think he's earned it, I think he's earned our support. I hope the community, the business community, the advertising community, everyone will be behind us, because it's really great for us. And so with that, I don't know if you want to talk, but I would offer to you your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone on city council and in the city, the school board, school district, for the support they've given me. In terms of accessibility and answering questions and emails at 1:00 o'clock in the morning and stuff like that. And I hope that, I did that with Patch, and it was really rewarding, and Jim's at Patch now, and--
Congratulations.
And now I'm doing the SalinePost.com, and I hope that you provide the same kind of accessibility, and I hope to be responsive to, to the community, and take, take my cues from the community first and foremost, and that's, that's the main gist of what I'm doing. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, are there any other says and comments? If not, as I mentioned before, well, we don't have any other business to come before at council, our next meeting's next Monday night at 7:30, and then we have September 10th and September 17th. So we have a motion adjourned at 8:49.
The move.
Second. Move tomorrow, second Gearbo? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.